I'd like to call this May 7th Council Work Session Order. Neither Chief is here yet. Since neither Chief.
Chief Slack is away on vacation, as I understand. Merle will be here to comment on the one item. Dealing with the proposed Sky Lantern ordinance. So Chief Slack is on vacation.
So you want to go to Merle first, or?
I would rather do Samantha first.
Of course Samantha's on the clock. Samantha, you're on.
I promised to give it to two minutes this time. Hi, my name is Samantha Prinker with Gilmore and Associates. I'm here today to give you an update to the MS4 Pollutant Reduction Plan. As a reminder, MS4 stands for Municipal Separate Storm Sewer Systems. This means it's all your inlets, roads, swales, outfalls are all handled by your MS4. We've been handling the MS4 general permit since 2006 and Bristol Borough has been in compliance since then. If you recall, I gave a presentation in August of 2007 where I presented the Pollutant Reduction Plan. This is the borough's five-year plan between the years 2018 and 2023 to reduce sediment loadings from the MS4 stormwater discharges to Silver Lake and Mill Creek. In late January, the Department of Environmental Protection issued a technical deficiency letters for minor comments. We had a meeting with the DEP representative on March 1st and we came up with a solution to meet the sediment reduction requirements. We had to propose a new BMP. There was two proposed. One was a hydrodynamic device and one was a vegetated swell. They agreed with our calculations for the vegetated swell. Unfortunately, they did not like the hydrodynamic device. So therefore, we had to come up with a new solution and we determined that a rain garden at the Otter Street Fields would be in compliance and DEP gave and okay, that we could go ahead with this proposal and that it would be acceptable. We would put it in the corner, would not affect, we would try not to affect the field at all. Stop the guilt there. We could put it in the corner to get the drainage area to work. This presentation counts as the public meeting and you can comment on the public, the Pollutant Reduction Plan. It began on May 1st and it's going to be extending through May 31st. The public can review the Pollutant Reduction Plan Monday through Friday between the hours of 8:30 and 4:30 at this office. And comments may be provided in writing and addressed to Mr. Dillon. That's all I have on the Pollutant Reduction Plan. Does anyone have any questions on that?
I was listening to you. What is the, I know we're being forced into this by the DEP. What is the cost of the borough on this? Where are we going to end up with this?
Well, it's an ongoing mandate.
I know it's mandated, but all these mandates cost taxpayers money. So what do you think this is going to end up costing us? Roughly, I'm not going to hold here, maybe Kurt wants a?
She's got it.
She's got it?
The construction could cost up to $100,000 to $150,000 to construct both the vegetated swell and the rain gardens. We are looking for grants to fund the construction. Unfortunately, there is no funding for all the reporting that we do and that's easily $5,000 to $10,000 a year, so.
You got all the engineering costs?
Right, for the projects coming up.
I know it's expensive. I did a small one in Buckingham. A home that I built, I spent almost $40,000 just to put this garden in.
Right, and DEP is requiring that you take such a large area. This will be a little bit larger of a rain garden than probably.
Thanks, right. But you know, it's like everybody puts these mandates on you, whether it's the school district or whether it's the borough and you know, we're in the, you know, taxpayers are not paying for this stuff. That's the only thing I don't think is right and there's no way to fight these things, so. Does anybody have any questions?
I mean, just, what is a rain garden? I don't even know what that is.
It's a question where the stormwater would flow into. It would have amended soils where the groundwater would infiltrate into the ground and they have water tolerant plants that would help soak up. And that way, the sediment gets trapped in the rain garden. It will have to be maintained yearly. And then this way, when the stormwater goes back into the ground, it's cleaned.
Okay. Thanks.
Yep, thank you very much.
All right, thanks. Chief, you ready or you want me to wait? Come back to you?
Yeah, if you would, come back to me a second, I just wanted.
All right, I'll open up public participation then. So anybody on this side of the room would like to speak on any item, please go to podium, state your name and address. That's nice. Anybody on this side of the room?
Hi, everybody. Raise my hand? My name's Mimi Olson and I own a couple of properties in the borough. One on Mill Street and one on Green Street. I'm here tonight, first of all, good evening to everybody. And thank you for allowing, I have to read this and if you notice me starting to pace a little bit. Probably I have to keep my legs down or they'll lock up on me.
I mean, if you turn, that microphone may not pick you up, so.
Okay. If somebody can't hear me, just say I can't hear you.
No, we can hear you, I'm talking about people at home.
Oh, okay. Thank you for allowing me this opportunity to discuss some concerns that myself, along with other borough residents and business owners, have in reference to the proposed road widening of Basin Street, starting at Mill Street. My name is Mimi Olson and I'd like to start off by letting you know of how much I love this borough. Since the age of 20, my dream was to one day own a house on the river in Bristol Borough. I lived many years off and on in the borough and had a business located in the borough for about seven years. My daughter and I own a business on Mill Street, are members of Raising the Bar, as well as we have become Elk members. Currently, I own two properties in the borough. A residential property on Green Street and a retail space in four apartments on Mill Street, located in 300 block. My parents and I are in the process of purchasing two properties located at 106 and 108 Basin Street. The home I've dreamt about for 40 years was going to become a reality. With this being said, I can tell you how disappointed and alarmed myself and others were and still are. When we heard the borough might be widening Basin Street and taking away the beautiful park extension that runs along the rear of the townhouses and the road, only to be replaced with a sidewalk right up against our soon-to-be property and asphalt. I'm going to read now some of the rumors that I've heard over, about this whole project. The first being, this area is a bottleneck. Okay, if it creates a bottleneck at Mill and Basin, which is 20 foot wide currently from inside curb to inside curb, what is the widening going to do for the 23-foot wide curb-to-curb opening that sits 100 foot away? That part of the road can't be widened on one side due to power poles and the other side because it would cut into the park, which would require a lot of work. Also heard that council doesn't care for the builder and is widening this road. A suggestion to widen the road results in having a 36-inch wide sidewalk with curbs smacked right up against these new high taxpayers houses. For truck vendors, for their use during sponsored events. I'm not sure how many courier we enjoy going with them ourselves. These trucks would sit three feet away from our townhome. They would create odors and noise, crowds and debris, disturbing and disrupting some of the borough's highest paying taxpayers' privacy. I doubt very few, if any, of these truck vendors are borough residents or would even come back to visit and spend some time in the borough. Their patronage is to themselves, not to the borough. Why not promote our restaurants or eateries located in the borough? Maybe some would create a special offering of foods that these truck vendors supply. Why not put those trucks up towards the 400 block? If people want truck food, they'll find it and it would bring exposure to businesses located up at that end, the 400 and 300 block of Mill Street. Pokemon players. They draw cars into the borough, which leads players directly to the riverfront. These people park on both sides of the street that have painted yellow curbs. Isn't a yellow curb used to let drivers know this is not a stopping or parking lane? Why aren't we having police on patrol till these people parking illegally move on? Maybe ticketing would help. You can request from the people that sponsor these games to remove the borough's waterfront from the game. My fear is that this is something that the borough did as a marketing piece to bring more visitors into the borough. These are some of the questions. Tonight, you'll be receiving a package with this list of questions and what we'd like to discuss at the next council meeting. Who owns the parcel ground located at the corner of Mill and Basin Streets, running along Basin to the new townhomes? If owned by the state, what type of agreement does the borough have with the state for this property? What is the end goal? Why does this road need to be widened? Who thinks it should be widened? Who requested that PENDOT develop the proposed plan? Who pays for the road widening? The borough residents? What is the estimated cost of the road widening? Why not do things the right way? Run underground wiring? We can't because it's too expensive. This plan suggests a seven-foot wide by 47-foot median to surround the existing power poles at one end of the street. Has PICO been requested to review the proposed plan? And from their perspective, is this something that would recommend or could be done as planned? The Pokemon people, that's, that's, that's stop. They create rubber neckers who are trying to figure out what the people in the parked cars are doing, holding their cameras on the search for something in the park. Last week, there was a yacht docked at the dock for some plant activity and a function at the King George. Both sides of Basin Street were lined up and down with cars that had no one in them. We didn't see one ticket. Why not? It indicates that no parking is allowed by the yellow curbing that runs up and down Basin Street. We have been watching the library of council meetings available on the website. One meeting in particular, I still have to find the date to go back to it. Mr. Joe Ventreska, the builder and owner of JVS publicly spoke about some challenges he was experiencing. One of these challenges was the widening of Basin Street. Mr. Ventreska was told by Mr. Di Giuseppe that a meeting would be scheduled to review the road widening and the plans would be developed together as a team. How is it that this meeting has yet to be scheduled and a plan that the state prepared exists? Although it might be conceptual, it still exists. I was fortunate to happen upon a copy of the state-provided plan, which will be used in our presentation to Borough Council. Tonight, we are presenting a version of proposed options for council to review and have the time to review prior to the meeting date yet to be determined. We will as well make copies of the borough's plan, along with the builder's suggestions, available to borough residents and business people. I am positive that each and every borough resident and business owner were questioned about this proposed road widening, which would require the disappearance of an established park, would overwhelmingly choose the builder's plan. This plan will be cost-free to borough residents and business owners. The only cost which, which JVS will cover for might be fees associated with having to hire an attorney to help us preserve some important history of the borough and make for a very impressive greeting to all the boaters and other visitors we look forward to having visit our docks. JVS has committed as well to landscaping this portion of the park with perennial shrubs and bushes. A portion of this park will be dedicated to seasonal flower plantings, which will include a watering system, along with two park benches, for people to sit and enjoy the tranquility and beautiful views. We need to create something that's going to make a good first impression and will encourage people to return and recommend others to visit us. Something that truly looks like the best Main Street in America. There is very little greenery in the park right now. Something we feel is the last thing that the borough needs to take away is existing greenery. When people come to visit by land or river to the brand-new docks, their expectation is to enjoy the peace, tranquility and relaxation a small riverside borough has to offer, where they can escape from the hot city filled with noise, traffic, cement and asphalt. These new Basin Street townhomes are the first visual impression visitors arriving by boat will have of Bristol Borough. These homes are expensive, will generate tax money for the borough and should be flaunted rather than looking like an inn with a highway in front of them. We are here tonight to let council know we will be submitting a formal application to council to have this concern added to the first available upcoming agenda for further discussion. In addition, we will be requesting a meeting with the park for further discussion. The package each of you will receive tonight is our preliminary package with alternate plan suggestions that could accomplish the goal of controlling traffic. An article on some history of Bristol Borough, taken right off of Google when searching for Bristol Borough. This is what visitors to Bristol Borough are expecting when they Google and get a beautiful article about Bristol Borough. And learn more and it makes them want to come here, learn more, along with a list of questions. We have, also going to get another list of questions after the ones that we have already read, because there's many more. Having ties with Bristol Borough for some time now, I've been told about the good, the bad and the ugly, a lot of people in the borough. I learned a long time ago that things that you hear don't always have merit behind them. One needs to find out for themselves what are truths and untruths. Being an optimist, I believe in others doing the right for the situation in hand. I'm simply trying to follow protocol here, along with providing council with upfront information that might lead to some positive discussion versus an adversarial approach to a solvable solution. Let's live up to the reputation of being the best Main Street in the USA. Keep the history that still exists today alive and continue to create new history for those who one day might be living in this wonderful borough. For those future generations who might assume some of our homes to live in down the road. At this time, I'd like to ask each council member separately what their thoughts are on having established a park minimized for the purpose of widening the road at the expense of eliminating the peaceful serenity of a park. And I will start with our ward representatives. So I'd like to start with Vice President.
Mr. Mimi, you don't get an opportunity to ask them questions.
Okay.
I mean, I don't know, I mean, if they want to answer the question, they can. But you usually direct anything to me, but if you want to ask them, that's up to them if they want to respond or not. I don't think it's called, you know, it's something.
Then I won't do it.
I don't, I don't have a problem responding to it.
Okay.
So, I mean, to me, I don't have, right? Say it again?
Mr. Peasant?
No, Mr. Devine.
I don't, I don't.
That's right, I got glasses too.
Tony, okay.
Yeah. So, to me, I don't have a problem. I like that Mr. Ventreska took the opportunity to buy that property, was in bad shape. He put a lot of, you know, put a lot of money and time into it, you know. I don't know what the purpose is myself, so, I mean, I have no problem keeping it the way it is and and building, you know, a nice little park area with.
Yeah, and you're going to get a copy of our proposed plans that are taken from an overview, looking on to.
How much more do you have? Because then I want to, I want to, I'll give you as much time as you need, I'm not in no hurry.
Okay. I do want to.
It's easier if you just continue instead of trying to get into a dialogue with council.
Okay. The only thing I want to say is that we do have an established email referred to as savetheparkbb@gmail.com. If anybody out there is interested in learning more about this project, getting a copy of the plans, anything, please again, emails at savetheparkbb@gmail.com. Thank you very much.
All right, so, I mean, you went through so many things. I don't think that we're going to get into a question and answer every meeting, like you're saying, this is first set of questions, second. It really, I mean, we contacted the builder and we asked him to come in numerous times and we asked him also to come in this month and he said he wasn't ready to come in.
Okay.
So I'm just trying to clear the air about some things that you're being told that.
And I have no problem going back to Joe and asking him what the deal is.
And you could check to Joe that he said he wouldn't be ready for this month's meeting.
Okay.
We're, well, me personally, I'm not, you know, it's not me meeting with him, it's the borough engineers and whoever else is involved with this.
Right.
As far as council doesn't like him.
I don't need answers to those questions tonight?
Well, no, I just want, you made a couple of statements that I want to clear up.
Okay.
I don't think anyone sitting here has anything personally against Joe Ventreska.
Okay.
So whoever's telling you that, I'm telling you personally that you go back to them and tell them I said they're a liar, unless there's something here that one of these council members I don't know about.
Okay.
But, I mean, you know, I don't, I appreciate everything he's doing for the town and. But from what I'm hearing, it sounds like you want this borough to basically give up everything that we're doing down there. You know, Pokemon, vendors against it down there, cops should be ticketing people on yellow lines. You know, the King George was, I mean, I don't know. We're not going to stop doing what we're doing just because, I mean, you or anybody else wants to buy a property there. Our job is to make sure that we make the right decision for the borough.
Okay.
And I think we've been over backwards with Mr. Ventreska to try to help him in any way we can to move this project along because there's nobody sitting here that does not want to see this project finished. Every time he comes here, he says, we're going to have a restaurant by the spring, we're going to have a restaurant by the fall, we're going to have a restaurant by the winter, we're going to have a restaurant by the, it's been going on for four or five years. And that's none of our business. You know, there was numerous project managers that he fired and brought back and different builders, so I don't think you have the right story of what's going on. And it's not up to me or any member of council to sit here and, you know, say that Mr. Ventreska doesn't know what he's doing or he doesn't know what he's doing. I think that the engineers are here and Kurt, I'm sure you want to, you could tell her how hard everybody's working to try to get this done.
Okay, before somebody explains something to me, I do have another question. Who made the decision that that was the right thing to do?
With what?
With widening that.
I think it's definitely the right thing to do. And I said that to Mr. Ventreska, I said it to your dad. I mean, I believe that that's, that right now with the amount of people we're getting down there, we need to do something with that route. And the two telephone poles that are there, I mean, you said we didn't meet with him to show him a concept plan. That was only a sketch plan that they did.
I have a better.
We're nowhere near, but what I don't understand is leaving the grass or not leaving the grass, what is your end game? What are you trying to accomplish?
For myself personally?
Yeah.
I'm trying to accomplish that when I look out of this expensive home that I just purchased, out into what I thought was going to be this beautiful setting.
It is.
I now look down to a sidewalk and asphalt. That's not, that's not good.
Okay, well, that's, you know, that's why.
And how many, I'd like to ask you, and respectfully, how many people on this council does your opinion affect their ability to vote? You're telling me right now that you yourself.
I'm only giving you my opinion.
Okay. When will the next meeting be scheduled to discuss?
We meet the first and second Monday of every month.
To discuss specifically the road widening?
Nothing, I mean, you're handing out flyers on First Friday, correct? Well, I'm saying, you guys are creating an issue that, you know, there's no, there's been no discussion on the floor except we had the engineer look into widening the road, okay? There's been no vote taken, there's been no meeting with Mr. Ventreska. So, I mean, we're in early preliminary stages right now.
Okay, but two years or three years from now, if this.
I don't know, I mean, I may not be here in two or three years.
I'm left with a property.
But what I'm saying is you want this borough to stop moving, to do something that may improve the borough because you want to buy a home. That's not our problem. Our problem is to do what's right for the borough and the taxpayers.
But that's what I'm asking is do what's right for the borough.
Doing what's right for the borough is to make the road wider. That's the right thing to do.
But according to who? If we, are the residents?
We have an engineer doing it.
The residents and business owners in Bristol aware of this and do they get a vote in any of this?
Kurt, why don't you explain what's going on?
There's, without a doubt, there's a need to modify the vehicular movements down at that corner. It's a terrible corner. We've seen a wonderful increase in foot traffic down there with the new docks and people going down to the waterfront back. I mean, the volume alone, you know, we had to put stop signs in at the intersection recently. It's all based on, you know, that's, and that's based on a warrant, a need, you know, that PENDOT has to sign off on. So, you know, there's no doubt that the configuration down there is not ideal. Widening it will improve the turning movements and, you know, you made the point that there were cars parked there and that's a problem. But you can't also have a cop just completely stationed there permanently. There's a need for people to want to, to park there. You know, there's loading, unloading that'll occur for the docks. And so all of these different things are taken into consideration when we're asked to look at a bad situation and come up with recommendations. There is no chiseled in stone, this is what has to be or not has to be, but we looked at the whole intersection and came up with a couple of concepts. You know, they all provide pros and cons, some slightly better than others, you know, but that's where we are right now in the process. But there's absolutely a need to do something down there for the vehicular and pedestrian interactions.
And all we are asking is to take a look at our proposal. We're proposing that we can come up and solve the solution without getting rid of that park. We need that particular area of the park so people can come, sit there, enjoy themselves, enjoy looking out at the river.
Nobody sits there. Nobody has ever sat there in all the years I've been going down there.
Well, I don't know that, I'll tell you what, somebody took the bench that sat right outside of our units away. People used to sit there all the time, now it's missing. These would be two benches created for that one particular park.
We have an enormous amount of space down there for people to sit around the gazebo and look at the river, there's benches. I mean, I don't know where this piece of land, and you want to know who owns the land, the borough owns the land. It's not a right of way.
Under what type of agreement does the borough own the land though? I'm sure at one time it was owned by the state, right?
I can't answer that.
Okay, well, we can find that out.
Felicity will probably could answer it.
So are you sort of telling me, like, don't continue to push on this fight?
I don't think, I don't think, I mean, I don't even know how to explain this to you. I think that your builder needs to, I mean, you're just a resident or, I mean, you have no standing as far as the borough, you're not building this project. So I think your developer needs to come in and he's been, Mr. Dillon had invited him in a few times.
I am acting on, as an agent, yes.
So I can tell you then how many problems there are down there?
Absolutely. Not a problem.
Why don't you, you're acting on Joe Ventreska's behalf?
Absolutely, yes, I do.
Okay, so. I can't go in, I would want to see something. You would like to see a, no.
From Joe, saying that he gives me permission to be, to be.
So you know all the issues that are involved with this project?
No, I don't know what.
Oh, well, I'm saying, you want to, if you're.
But the issue I do know about is that there's an intention to widen the road.
There is.
And you're telling me there's no, you're not giving me any hope or glimmer of a hope that that may not happen. Why can't that be made into a one-way street? Why is that 23-foot space not going to be a bottleneck or a problem with? You know, there's a lot of things that could be done.
All right, Mayor, you want to?
I think he's just trying to communicate to you that even though in your mind and maybe the other people's mind, you're supporting your effort, that this council has already made a decision to move forward. The only thing this council has done is put together, ask the engineer to put together what could be there. There's been no meetings, no approvals, no nothing.
But what was the reason? What was the reason they were asked to put that specific plan?
The engineer just explained it.
It's been a reoccurring challenge for years. It's been a reoccurring challenge for years with all the different events we have. You can't get around that corner, it becomes a safety challenge when you have stalls down there and vendors and so forth, so we're looking at public safety. But the bottom line is, there will be meetings, they'll be reported out, what the borough's gonna do. At this point, they haven't done anything. I think it's good for you to submit your concerns or your questions, but nobody has done anything, has, other than asking the engineer to look at what could be done, that's it.
We consider ourselves, we're, we're at risk for purchasing these properties right now in this borough.
But you should be talking to your developer because, I mean, we've been waiting for five years for this to be done.
I agree. I have absolutely no qualm with discussing with Joe those things. But I don't think that I should be told by council president that we're not, there's no shot in hell that we're gonna get there.
I didn't say that, you're putting words in my mouth.
Alls he told you is there's no decisions that have been made and he gave you his personal feelings about it.
His feelings, his personal feelings.
But there are no, there have been no meetings scheduled because we can't move forward until the developer comes in. Can't deal with the individual property owners. I mean, you can, you should make your concerns, you know, addressed to Mr. Ventreska.
I will, then, I will talk to Joe tonight.
Look, you're, you're welcome here anytime you want.
Absolutely.
You know, you had called me and Al has called me to meet privately about this. I don't wanna meet privately.
Okay.
I'm not meeting with anybody privately and, and you said this and I said, I'd rather meet in a setting. This way, like you just said, I said, I didn't say it was a done deal. I said, "We're moving forward, we have the engineer looking at stuff." That doesn't mean tomorrow this is gonna happen.
But you think it'd be your personal opinion and I didn't take it as...
But we have, we have a problem down there that needs to be resolved. Whether it's widening it, whether it's, we don't know what the solution is.
Well, let us be part of helping this, solve the solution.
But we can't bring people in on every decision this council makes. This isn't how it works. This council sits down with our planners and our engineers and we make the best decision we can as a council for what we think is right. If every time we voted on this council, we had to bring everybody in from every, you never accomplish anything. So it doesn't work that way. And it's no disrespect to you, tomorrow we're gonna decide we wanna do something in another area of town. We'll listen to everybody's concerns, just like we're listening to yours right now, but the end result is these eight members have to make a decision.
Okay, now what venue, when you said that we should get together, there should be a group, you're not gonna meet one-on-one. Who is that group of people that we should meet with?
See, that's the problem with meeting privately. What I said was, we meet here the first and second Monday of every month. You could come every month and voice your concerns, you could have questions, we'll get your questions answered to the best of our ability, whatever we can do, but as far as you, Mimi Olson, being part of this decision or any decision that this borough is going to make, it's not gonna happen. This council is gonna make a decision on what we're going to do down there. It may be seven to one, it may be four, I don't know what the vote's gonna be, but we're not voting on something because we don't know what we're doing yet. Like you said, there's utility poles in a way. We have contacted PEC, they're probably gonna move the poles. The gas company came out and lowered the gas line, you aware of that?
I'm aware that they lowered the gas line.
Okay, so there's things happening, but I don't think tomorrow or this summer you're gonna see a, a road getting wider. I'm not telling you the following year that may not happen. I'm not telling you it's ever gonna, I don't know what's going to happen, but when our engineer and we get done and we come up with a very solid plan for that area, we're gonna monitor the traffic patterns this year, how things go, we're gonna sit down and we're gonna make the best decision that we have to for the, for the taxpayers.
Can we monitor the Pokemon people?
This is, this is the problem.
This is all created by the Pokemon people who are not spending money in this borough.
But listen, Mimi, we welcome everybody to come here and the problem is you, it's like somebody buying a house near the Highlands and then they start complaining, they hear the trains all night. The trains were there before you bought the house. The river was there before Joe Ventreska bought the ground. So we're not changing anything for Joe or anybody else. We're gonna make whatever decisions we have to for the borough.
That park was there before I bought the house.
Huh? Listen, I didn't, nobody sitting here designed that property. Maybe it should've been designed different. I mean, you know, I'm, I'm not gonna say he did the right thing or the wrong thing, but all I could tell you is there should've been maybe some things that he could've done prior to getting into this position.
So, what do we do from here on? I have to come to every council meeting?
You don't have to come to anything.
To voice to this, well, how do I, how do we get our opinion out there?
You could, we're gonna communicate with the builder.
What about the meeting that was talked about, this was in September sometime, I'll find it, where he was told by you, Mr. President?
We didn't have a meeting yet. What do you want me to have a meeting for? What do you want me to tell him?
Well, there's a proposal on the table.
There's no proposals on the table. This council is not...
There's a proposed conceptual plan.
That, that they did, there may be 50 more of them before anything's decided.
Okay, and was it ever brought up at council, and presented at the council meeting?
Did anybody see the plan, Kurt Drew?
I didn't.
So I don't know how you got a copy of it, how'd you get a copy of it?
I'm not gonna disclose that. Perman expediting is my business, so I, I know some of the truth to the thing.
But what I'm saying is, for you to have a copy of it, council had, somebody from council had to give it to you.
No, no, it wasn't.
Well, it wasn't given out to the public.
Oh, you know, the state has people I know too.
The state?
Yeah.
What's the state got to do with it?
Who, who engineered the plan? Who did, I mean, there's a lot of ways I could've gotten it, so I don't wanna...
You wanna come here, you wanna be honest, be honest.
I am being honest.
You know, like you're saying, you heard a rumor that council's against Joe Ventreska.
That is one of the rumors.
Okay, so then why don't you tell us where you heard the rumor?
I've heard one of the, um...
You heard that I'm mad at Joe, I mean, you heard all that shit.
I heard a lot of stuff. I'm telling you, I have heard a lot of stuff.
Good.
And I'm welcome the stuff that you will inform me about after I get Joe's approval to, with Joe, so I can...
Maybe he'll have you at the meeting.
Put a little fire under him too.
Maybe Joe will invite you to the meeting.
Okay.
Bring you to the meeting.
So if I work as his agent, would I be able to attend that meeting?
If you, what?
If I, on board as his agent, will I be invited to attend that meeting?
Joe can bring you, whether you're an agent or a friend or whatever, he could do anything he wants. He's meeting with the borough. If he wants to bring you or five more people, that's fine.
Is that meeting scheduled? Is there a scheduled date?
Nope. Again, let me explain it to you. We contacted Mr. Ventreska.
Right.
What did he say to us?
That he's not ready for this month, they're ready for...
So how can we have a meeting scheduled if he's not ready?
Well, how many months have you asked him that question? That's what I need, now, I'll get the, I'll get his signature that it's okay for me to ask these questions.
Let's try to wrap this up. Tony, you wanna say something?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I mean, I'm listening, I'm, I'm listening to the fine young lady over here and, yeah, yeah, Mimi, and to me, it sounds simple. She wants to have a meeting with borough council or whoever's gonna make that decision, which is...
Engineers, whoever.
Us eight engineers to sit down with Joe herself and whoever else would have, sit down and figure out, so we can work together to figure out something that works for both parties, so.
Okay, so how do we have the meeting until Mr. Ventreska's ready to schedule it?
Right, that's what I, I agree with, so you're ready to set up.
What I'll do is I'll make sure Mr. Ventreska calls you.
Don't call me.
Who does he call to set up the meeting?
Borough. He knows who to get in touch with. He gets in touch with the borough manager and the engineers.
Mr. Dillon, exactly who he gets a hold of, okay.
Tell him to send me an email.
All right, I will do that.
And whenever...
I hear our holders, I'm gonna leave for everybody to put them on a dust sheet.
Right there.
They're addressed to certain, like, council person.
All right, we'll get them. You wanna hand them to me, Mimi, so they don't fall?
Here, I'll give them.
Go.
One thing, one thing. Oh, wait, I took two with knees on them, I need to talk to them.
Now, I'm gone for the day, but I think Al might have something he needs to, or wants to mention.
Al, sure. Just state your name and all for the record.
My name is Al McCool, I'm proud dad of this lovely book. We have seven children and we're thrilled to come up here. I've known Ralph for quite a while. I don't know him personally, but I know about him and he's a good man and he's done a lot of good for this, this borough. What we're asking is for consideration for maybe a better way, maybe a way you didn't think of, that we could, that we have, we have some drawings and things that you'll find in that folder that you may entertain and may say, "This is a better idea." So, from what I understand right now, it's not locked in, that proposal, that we...
There's, there's nothing, Al, that's been signed, there's nothing that's been etched in stone. We are trying to do everything we can to move this project along. And once we get an opportunity to meet with Mr. Ventreska, we may be able to solve a lot of the, I don't know, I mean, Kurt, you deal, I don't deal with, I mean, you gotta, I'm sure, pages and pages of stuff that needs to be resolved over there.
Yeah. Joe, just like me and everyone else here, we all need, from time to time, we need council, we need to talk and get, maybe get some things explained and find a better way. One of the things that's very, very disturbing is that we, this property was like a Disneyland story to us. We were so happy about moving up here, kinda hear things like, "Well, we'll just throw a fence around their house." I heard that come out of this council, somebody, and I, and that makes me very, very distressed. We're here to help support the borough, we wanna be part of the borough. We don't want to be, experience threats like that. What we're asking is please consider what we're, the things that we're proposing and please let us be good neighbors. It's all we wanna do and we'll dedicate, we'll donate, whatever we need.
The only thing I can say is, Al, we're doing nothing, nothing to stop that project to be completed.
Well, you hear that.
As far as the, the project, I mean, you have an issue with the ground or, that's one thing, but as far as the project in a whole, this borough is doing everything they can to get that project completed.
And I have heard that. I thank, I thank you very much. I was told there were some money issues and they were resolved and borough very quickly got back to Mr. Ventreska. So I appreciate the borough's help.
So please help us be good neighbors, help us survive there and, and the part about, about keeping making that park, maybe it never has been spruced up or landscaped properly. We plan to do that. We plan to make that a very nice, bigger, when people coming off their boats and see that, you wanna take a rest of the bench.
So you would rather have a bunch of people, 50 or 100 people, sitting out there every night?
It's funny, we walk past, people are, they're looking at the house and they're saying, "That's great, what's happened that..."
Okay, I'm glad you said that.
Yeah, but we don't, we, we like to have food trucks or vendors parked there blowing the gas and the food smells in the house. There's other places they can go and...
I mean, Mimi brought that up. We're never gonna put vendors up on Mill Street. There's been ethnic festivals down there from before all of us...
It's getting back to money, that's another thing you may wanna consider. I mean, and so if anybody wants to throw a fence up around our, our house, I think that's, that's very mean.
I don't know where you're getting your information.
Yeah, that's what we like to know.
I mean, I, I, to tell you the truth, not to burst your bubble, but we don't talk about your project in council.
Well, you should start. You should start talking about it.
Why? There's nothing we can do.
It's a meaningful...
You're talking about taking away the park, I, I don't, half of that park got sold years ago by a council before us to the people that owned the restaurant at the time.
Right.
So the park already, half of it's gone and your building is right on the property line.
Correct.
And that probably, you know, in my estimation, that may be part of the problem here, that every, you know, the footprint is built upon, we didn't create that issue, but we also have a zoning because whatever we do to you, we have to do to anybody else who has the same kind of situation. It's not that we think you're a good person or a bad person or we like the way Joe does something or we don't like it. There's a zoning law, there's building codes, we have to deal with those. We don't sit there and say, "Well, oh, we're gonna put a fence around the project." I mean, that's, that's, I don't know who's telling you that, but it's really...
Whoever heard that knows who's it was and I...
Well, but you're coming up and you're saying it. Mimi said it, you're saying, people are watching on TV thinking that we sit there, sit here and try to sabotage this project. We don't even talk about it.
You're not helping it, I'll tell you that. That's, we'd like to, like to be part of this.
Well, PNDOT came in and surveyed the area. They put two stop signs up. We didn't tell them, we didn't agree to it. They did the survey and they put two stop signs up.
But you're making a decision on whether to take in that park area and have the council take it?
But you're saying a park area, it's a little triangle there, it's not, across the street is a park.
No, it's not. 20% of that whole area is right in front of our house. There's nothing left by the river either, before you know it's all gonna be going if you keep working with it this way.
Eric, this is the part that's really mind-boggling to me. First of all, I don't know what you want us to do.
I want you to...
Listen, forget about the, forget, to get this project done.
'Cause all I wanted to do is to look at some other considerations.
Okay, let's put this, let's put...
He's a smart man, right? He's a very smart man, he's waiting for us.
Now, let's put, excuse me, one minute. Let's put the park issue aside. Let's take that off the table.
Okay.
What, when does this project wanna get done? What are we doing to hold up the project?
I never said you're holding it down.
Okay, so this is what...
But I did, we are saying, we, we think it's the mean thing to do to, to all the people that attend that park, taking away that, the grass and the pleasantries.
And that's an opinion you have.
And a lot of people have that opinion.
And I respect that opinion. I'm not saying I don't respect it.
Yeah.
But what I'm saying is, and I think Louis, I feel his frustration, that this council is being criticized for this project not being finished or being completed when there are numerous, numerous, numerous issues with this project.
Well, we're gonna help you move them along, we're working with you and...
I mean, you know, this engineer has tried everything he can to get this project finished. The borough has tried everything to get this project finished. So this piece of ground that you're talking about is a moot point right now, that has nothing to do with this project coming to completion.
I never said...
This borough, it's been five years maybe, this project's still going on.
Getting closer, yeah.
So, I mean, think about what you're saying, this issue just came up six months ago. We're doing nothing but trying to get this project finished.
Okay, but you're also...
So I think you need, and Mimi said she represented Mr. Ventreska and the solicitor said without a letter, I mean, I would get into a lot of things with you and every, any councilman here wants to...
Yeah, we'll get to that, we'll get to that, because we, nobody wants it more than We'll get to that. We'll get to that. Because we, nobody wants it more than we do. We're supposed to make something up last July, Ralph. Last July. It's been over a year. So we know, we know the pain you're feeling. We're feeling more pain because we want to, we want to move in there. My daughter is striving, her family.
But the ground has nothing to do with you moving in?
I didn't say it's it.
Okay, well, I'm saying, that's what I'm trying to get, make it clear to everybody that this ground has no bearing on this project.
When we do move in, that maybe, maybe our engineers could, could take an idea or two from, from someone else.
Maybe they can.
Yeah, so.
I'm not, we're not just shutting the door in your face saying, we're not willing to talk to you. Nobody's doing that.
That's what, that's all.
What we're saying is, we also have nothing to do with the project.
Okay, well, all we're asking for is a little consideration, being good neighbors, moving into the area. I mean, I'll take the last thing we want to do is just say, why do we want to live here with all this craziness? But thank you for the audience and we're going to continue to work for you, all right?
Anybody else would like to speak on anything? Go to the podium and state your name. Nah, we're here all night. It doesn't matter.
Hi, my name's Lauren Panzano. Not a business owner, not one of the wealthier families in the area.
Not one at all, Lauren?
Not one of the wealthier families in the area, not a long time resident, but I moved here because I fell in love with it the first time I came here. I know it's not something that has really been kind of of concern. I know it's not something where there's a definite on it yet, but just maybe as one of the younger people who moved here because I fell in love with it and saw the charm. And when I have friends come visit, they call this place Pleasantville because everyone is just lovable and kind in the way that it looks and the way that our waterfront is. So I guess more so for me, I just, I like being able to be a younger person in the area who kind of wants to say, maybe it's not the biggest chunk of land there. Maybe it isn't technically the biggest piece of the park. But for me, aesthetically, it's even just that little bit of green that's left there in front of what is now just a building on a waterfront, which, no offense to people that I love that own this gorgeous new waterfront home, but to me, it's at least a nice little aesthetic in front of it to kind of have some kind of diversity between asphalt and then another building. It makes it look more homey. It makes it keep kind of that feel there. So, even though there's nothing that's definitely been done yet, but I like the fact that there's other plans that are kind of in action about it and other ways to go around it. So, I'd like to, I don't know, I guess I've never really come or been very active, but when it comes to park stuff, I'm kind of a nerd. So, um, I don't know, but I appreciate the fact that there are, there are other options that are at least being weighed out. I don't want to see any of the park touched. That would be ideal, but I suppose with increased traffic in the area, especially after kind of just having the most beautiful main street.
I think what we're trying to do and be good neighbors to everybody, and I think the last time we spoke, matter of fact, we were down there for the doc meeting and a few of us were talking about landscaping along the, but the other problem is, do you start putting up our devices and things like that, then the people say, they're sitting at the restaurant, the, so, you got to find a happy medium and that's what we're trying to do. But as far as the road getting wider, I don't foresee that, we wouldn't be doing our job if we didn't widen that road.
I know.
As a, as a, as a borough.
I understand that it's a bottleneck.
And whether it gets landscaped, whether it gets a couple park benches, that all could be, come into play. We're not ruling anything like that out, but to do, to do what's right, if you go down there and you see system trucks trying to back into the King George, they go over the curb, they can't get in, there's trucks up on the hill trying to get, it's a congested area. And it's getting more congested and a lot of the seniors are telling us, why can't we get dropped off for events down there? There's no drop off spot, so maybe there's going to be some handicap parking. We don't know yet. So for me to sit here and say, this is the plan, I'd be lying to you.
Because I, I've understood that there's no definite plan, just.
No, there is not a definite plan. So when you hand out your flyers and you were saying, wait a minute, you were saying a four lane highway?
No, I said for, no, I said for, no, for a four, like a four lane area there. So basically, either way, it's still, I'm sorry, I'm really not good at speaking.
Nah, that's all right. You're doing good.
You're fine.
You'll be a pro by the end of this.
I'm really not good at being super assertive.
Nah, you're good.
But you're fine. I just thought it would be really nice to maybe have, my approach was more trying to get younger people in the community because that's.
So you don't want to get rid of the Pokemon people, do you?
If I'm being honest, I think it's kind of a pain in the butt sometimes, just because they'll be all congested in one little area, but.
That's not nice.
I haven't gotten, I haven't gotten personally observed the parking issues, but I do, I, I have seen them. I have seen. So that's something I haven't.
Major, major problems with, when there's trucks backing in, like Ralph was saying, into the King George to deliver beer and whatever. There's been so much traffic in there and it's really scary. Like, we don't want anybody to hit anyone, you know?
Because they come in masses.
Karen, you have a question for her?
Well, not really a question. I just, I was just wondering, what, what would be the drawback of just having that as a one way? I mean, just looking at it, what would be the drawback of it?
There really wouldn't be a drawback, like, there wouldn't really be a drawback. If when you think about it, all the other roads that go down to the main parking lot, they're all one ways.
Right, no, I was talking to our, the council president and council. What would, I don't understand, like, what would be a drawback to it?
Something Kurt has to look at.
You're forcing all the, all the trucks and the traffic up.
That's right.
We'll take that under consideration. Thanks, Lauren.
Lauren, does anybody else on this side of the room want to speak on anything?
Ralph, I always like when you say, we can discuss things, we can work together, we can disagree, but we'll leave as friends. That's what we want to do. Leave as friends and be good neighbors and support whatever the council wants us to do. But please, consider other issues, other ways to build. If you put one person ahead, I believe it's the best way. Thank you for that.
That's why we have planners and engineers.
Can we talk to them about some of the ideas?
Okay, we're out there, not here. Anybody else have anything? Go to the podium, please.
Hi, my name's Becca Olson and I am a business owner and a newly resident in the borough. I, not really, I'm not, you know, not even going to go into that. I'm going to go into it in the sense of, I feel that, I mean, there's obviously rumors that are, that go around, like it's a bottleneck, it's, you know, it's a hazard, there's, you know, not enough, like, room for pedestrians to walk. And even just being down there, I, even at nighttime, it gets, it gets confusing with the way you can go and different, even the stop signs are new. I can't tell you how, we have tallies when we sit outside of the cantina, who's going to stop, who's not going to stop. But I think, I mean, I've talked to, I did talk to Robert from the King George and I had asked him how his deliveries, you know, how they do come in and come, how they make their deliveries. And he said that, you know, they come in through Mill Street and they go in and they back up into the, so for me, I had asked him if he, you know, had a problem with it being a one way and, you know, being able to dump out into the parking lot and that would be the exit way from Mill Street. I mean, I can't say that honestly, I ever come up from the parking lot onto Mill Street that way. I just think it would be easier. It would create space for people to walk their dogs, people to. People, people to be. I think that area, to widen it, to get rid of the, the grass, the sidewalk, I think it would create more of a hazard than, in the long run, than it would to just, I don't think we should widen it. I'm sorry.
Well, just, just before you leave, I'm, thank you for your opinion, but you need, there's a lot that goes into these decisions. You got.
Right.
Emergency management, you got fire trucks, you got EMS responding to things.
So is there a way for me to get a site plan for the King George and the, like, a property?
Google map.
Google map it. Okay, okay. Just go into like the borough zoning.
Can you share the property number?
There is.
The zoning map.
Well, I know there's a zoning map. I, I've done.
I'm curious, is there an actual map that shows the property lines?
Zoning map.
Well, zoning map.
Tax map.
Tax map.
And there are stakes in the ground that Mr. Ventreska put in and his deck is about an inch away from his property.
But it shows me for, I'm talking about for the King George as well.
What, do they own?
Like, yeah, where the area is that's owned.
King George owns the building they're in. The sidewalks are right of ways.
So they're owned by the borough?
Well, they're owned.
The right of way is owned by the owner at some.
So like the back patio of the King George that's owned by the borough?
No, it's owned by the King George.
Okay.
We own the road.
So that patch of grass behind the townhomes is owned by the borough?
Owned by the borough.
Okay.
Coming down the hill, the sidewalk?
So when it was a restaurant, was it owned by the restaurant?
No.
No? Okay.
The sidewalk is a right of way. There's two different things.
All right, thank you. I appreciate your time.
Anybody else on this side of the room? Want to speak on any issue?
We're here the first and second Monday, Al, every month.
Okay, anybody on this?
Side, came in new. Public participation. Lauren, what do you have?
What about the chief? You don't want to let the chief?
Chief, I forgot all about you.
Let me just go real quick, so next week on how long you guys want to be here. But again, more importantly is just, as everybody knows, it's been extremely busy in town, especially with the warm weather. Last Friday was extremely challenging with the crowds in town and also our responses to our neighboring community because of the tragedy that occurred across town. But we handled it. We had a couple arrests up in the harem and section regarding some car burglaries and we have some progress working on the Penn Street shooting. We are going to be asking the council for a need for substitute crossing guards again, at least two, possibly three. Senator, Mr. Dillon regarding the hiring of a part-time patrol officer, Kevin Riley, who is a Bucks County Ranger. Again, this will be no budget increase, but when we have officers like this on a part-time basis who are involved with other municipalities or Act 120 certified, it just leaves our pool and our flexibility. Officer Webb participated in the Comps and Kids Delaware Valley Reading Program. I cite a Gerardi, he was very well received. And next week is National Police Week and we'll be presenting several commendations to officers for events that occurred during 2017 and also recognizing the retirement of K-9 Keela. That's it.
Any questions for the chief?
Chief, I just want to say thank you to you and the police department for, I know you've had a really busy week and I'm glad that everyone's safe in our department. And thank you.
Appreciate it.
Oh, wait, I have, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
I thought he said to talk to the police. Anybody else want to talk to the police, right?
Yeah, but I went to you because.
Okay, Mr. Dillon, I just want to know, what's happening with Mill Run?
Uh, I think they're moving ahead. I think council may want, ask them to come in and give council an update on the project and their timetable and have that discussion maybe after June work session.
I would like that. I would like them to come in because it hasn't looked like they've been doing too much there. And I, I want to see what the heck's going on. I've been getting a lot of questions from my neighbors, people that are interested in living there, people that are, you know, and it just has been, it looks like a standstill. So I would really like for them to come in in June. That would be great. Can you make arrangements?
I will.
Thank you. That's it.
Yeah, a couple of questions. The first thing I have is, Mr. Dillon, can we get the, the road crew to do a couple of things? The first thing is on Route 13, the medians that we elected to cut and the areas where we come into, to the town where the lights are. So right across from Burger King, the Dunkin' Donuts area, those bushes are just collecting debris, plastic bottles, bags, wrappers. So we can get, you know, somebody out there to clean that. And the second thing I would like for them to do is, today I was up, up at the baseball fields and our, our swing sets on the playground, there's three out of four that are broken.
Where, where?
And they're wrapped around, I don't want any, kids are going to get their fingers or something stuck in those chains. So if we at least get those things down, if they're, if we're not able to fix them.
Can I just go back to the first two things?
Yeah.
The grass has never been accepted by the borough.
Mm-hmm.
So we are not cutting it because it was never put in to our specifications. So right now the state is maintaining the medial strip.
Okay, so not even the bush area?
We're not doing anything.
Okay.
We have nothing to do with that at this point. We said that a few times before.
Mm-hmm.
So just so you know, the second thing is.
We just had in the median, little strip in front of Dunkin' Donuts and Burger King is in the township. It's their responsibility, if any, one.
Okay.
Townships and the states.
That's what I was going to say.
No, but the one that's catty corner across, that's in front of the, it's going to be the state's anyway. We're not.
It's going to be the state. The state's going.
Right, because we're not doing it anyways. That doesn't matter.
And then as far as the playgrounds, there was vandalism there?
Mm-hmm.
I don't know. I was going to ask the chief. I don't know. Word to chief or no?
I can receive the email from Mr. Dillon just regarding some trash cans knocked over and stuff like that.
This way, they think they broke three swing sets or.
So that's probably.
On there.
Yeah. Um, I guess the other question I have, I have another question. This is probably more for Mr. Miller, but there is a resident that, how do we handle this situation? We have a landlord that took a deposit of like thirty-four hundred dollars and before the, the resident moved into the property, they realized that there was an infestation of bugs. And they never took the property. And now this resident cannot, didn't move in and now cannot get in touch with the landlord.
I'd suggest he or you send me an email and we'll check it out.
Okay.
I have no idea, you know, no address.
No, no, I didn't want to put it out on public, public view right now, but I will send that to you when I go home. All right. The next couple of things I want to talk about is, now, in the paper, we talked about, ten years ago, there was a, there was an agreement made with the redevelopment authority about the properties on Chestnut and Elm Street. So, the, the reason why that's frustrating is that every time that I brought it up about what are we doing, what is the plan with these properties, it was always, well, we don't know. We, well, it could be this or it could be, there was never a plan. But ten years ago, there was enough of a plan or, or foresight to get the redevelopment to sign an agreement that they're going to take on the property. So, to me, I think there's, this is the problem, I think, that people have is why they would believe that there's only a certain couple of people that make decisions. So it's not just, you know, the eight council members here, you know, the, the public themselves. So some of the things that you guys aren't aware of, the minority of council also are not aware of. So, like, to me, I'm just frustrated as a council person, somebody had ran and knocked on every single door and, you know, and campaigned, that we don't get, we don't, we don't get informed of the information that, you know, the, the majority of council has. So, just saying that. So the next question I have is, what, what would be the purpose of the RDA? If we're spending our money on these properties, what would the RDA have to do with any of it?
Well, just, I don't want to burst your bubble.
Yeah.
But just answer your first question, there is no agreement with the RDA.
Oh, so whatever was written in the paper.
Everything you just said about this council is false.
Oh, it's not true. Okay.
Because there is no agreement with the RDA.
So, what we read in the paper is not true.
What's this?
So what was in the paper is not true.
Well, what I think you read, and I'm not sure because I don't read the paper.
Sure.
Is that council probably at some point will turn this ground over to the redevelopment authority to market the property. And we would have to vote on signing an agreement with the RDA, which was never brought up to council yet. We talked about it a couple times saying that once we acquire whatever ground, the, the smart thing to do is to turn it over to them. So for you to go through this litany of campaigning and nobody knows anything and, it's a shame, you sit here and you've been here for, I don't know, five, six years, whenever. I don't know where you got that information that we turned it over to the RDA. Well, don't believe everything you read in a newspaper.
Well, as you said, I mean, I just.
So that's, just to let you know.
I should only believe everything.
All you stood to find, all you had to do was say, do we have an agreement with the RDA? Wouldn't that be easier?
Because I read in the paper and I thought maybe it was kind of comical since I've brought it up numerous occasions and I got the same answer. And it was Mr. White who said that they signed an agreement about ten years ago, or they had an agreement, ten years ago.
A cooperation agreement with the RDA.
Okay, but what I'm saying is, so you talked about the properties with Mr. White, I'm sure, and the redevelopment authority.
No.
No, okay. All right, so the next.
Let me, let me finish.
Yeah.
Because I don't want to let this go.
All right, fair enough.
The borough has a cooperation, just like probably almost every borough and township, with the RDA on anything that we may want to do. Okay? All right, so that's cleared up. Now, what's your next question?
All right, so the next thing with the RDA, what, so we're spending taxpayers' money. So right now we spent close to probably two million dollars. So we'll probably spend another, what, half a million dollars? So two and a half million dollars of taxpayers' money that's going in to buy these properties. So, why do we, what is the purpose? Now, I don't know, that's why I'm asking the question, is what would, what's the purpose of turning it over to the RDA if we're using our money? Like, I don't understand. What do they do for us at that point?
Well, first of all, they're eligible for all kinds of grants and different, why don't you explain it to them? I don't want to waste.
So the same thing.
You're wasting your time. It's a question.
I'll let the solicitor.
No, that's a good question because we've done this with Mill Run.
No, it's a good question, because we've done this with Mill Run, and we've done it with some other things. The RDA, number one, has access to infrastructure grants that we don't. Number two, they can negotiate with the, if we were to turn this over to them pursuant to an agreement, they can negotiate with the last property owners, which we can't do, okay? And they can then go out and seek developers who might be interested in developing this, and working with us, of course, to see what it is we want there. So this is something that every municipality does. It's a great thing in Pennsylvania, we worked with the RDA, but we have no agreement with them for that property. I don't know where that came from, and it's a shame that instead of reading the paper and taking it as true, you just don't ask somebody. Because if you had asked Mr. Dillon, he would have said, there's no agreement. But anyway, so that's why we go to the RDA. We don't have to, but they give us options, and they give us access to money that could produce a project that we can't do. So it's what we did with Mill Run, it worked out very well. I think we did it with taking down the powerhouse.
The previous coun, there's been councils working with Bob White's fruit.
1986.
Right, no, I just, on those...
It's a, it's a good tool to have then, to get things done.
Right, and I understand that about properties that maybe have...
It's not only properties, it could be anything.
All right, well, can I finish? So the properties that we have, the Mill Run, I understand, because it had an owner, these properties, we're buying up, we're the owners. So it's not like we need money to purchase or to help purchase, we're buying, we're using taxpayer money to already purchase them. So it's not the same as Mill Run or the other...
Mr. Devine, it's always our money. The RDA doesn't put up money for us to buy properties, it's always our money. They just can negotiate it differently, or they could take the property by amendment of me. We paid for Mill Run, not the RDA. We paid for the power.
I'm only going back because you told me they could deal with the owners, if that's what you said. All right, well, if we bought it, we're just...
But we still pay for it.
All right, that's fine. All right, so now, the other thing, and I've been talking about this for a while, is that you have Elm Street and you have Chestnut Street. So it's going to cost taxpayers $2.5 million. So, I mean, again, we always talk about looking at this as a business. So what is your return on investment, and when does it happen? So the taxpayers are paying $2.5 million for these properties. Where is the break-even point? How many houses can we build on those properties? Say everything is bought, and that we use the RDA to get us some grant money to, you know, tear the things down or do whatever. So let's say all said and done, we're going $2.5 million. How long, how many houses can we put on that property? And Ralph, you're a builder, so you have an idea of, how many houses can we get there?
It's, it's really a tough question to answer, because you don't know what ground, what roads, retention basins, if it's homes, it may not be homes. I mean, if I had my wish, and I'll tell you after the meeting, I think that there's something that could be done there, which I really don't want to go public with it, that I think would be a great fit for that area.
And, and how long would it take for us to recoup that $2.5 million with...
Taxes?
Yeah, with taxes.
Well, if you're talking homes, I mean, a new home, probably, the minimum they're going to pay is around $8,000 a year in taxes. 60% of that goes to the school, 24%, I think, goes to, 66% to the school.
It's just not taxes, we're going to get paid, the borough's going to get paid when you sell the property to the developer.
Okay.
You're going to get all your permit fees and anything that's going on there. So, you know, you just, there's, there's times where you sell property and you, you know, like Sunday's paper, I mean, you know, the guy wants 20% profit and get his money back. Half of the country would like to get their money back on a property that they, they bought over the last 20 years. I mean, the economy went into tank, there's people paying $2 million for homes, forget about, and they lost 20, 30%, they can't sell them, or they're underwater, people overpay for them. So we have never appraised a property on Chestnut or Elm Street based on a street that was boarded up. We always told the guy that did the appraisals to base that home like it was somewhere else. And, you know, because you paid $100,000 for a house, and it's only worth 70, anywhere, forget about just Chestnut Elm Street, and it's only worth 70, it's not fair for us to, and we can't by law give you more than that appraised value. You know, we could go $1,000 either way or something like that, but we just can't say, you know what, we're going to give you $100,000 and only appraise for 70. That's where the RDA comes in, and they might be able to say, you know what, we can negotiate this deal, we'll give you the 100, to get, you know. So that's a tool that we don't have. That's one example.
No, so the problem that I have is that, once, if we're talking about, all right, we paid a certain amount of money, bought a house for 100, but it's only worth 70 now, we don't want to pay, I understand that. But as taxpayers, we're spending $2.5 million on property, for what is somebody going to be, what would somebody buy that parcel of land for?
I have no idea.
I mean ballpark, what would they spend?
I have no idea.
You have to have an idea. Don't you have to have an idea? I mean, that's what you do.
10 million.
10 million?
To make you happy.
That's a great number, now that's a good deal. So we could say, we're going to get a deal with the redevelopment authority now. Excellent.
I have no idea.
All right, so what I'm saying is this, if, if you put houses there, and I just did like, just simple math, if you put 10 houses there, each house would have to make up $250,000 in taxes. So it would take, based on, I did it off of $7,000 taxes, and the school's getting 65, we're getting 35%, so each house would get 20, $2,450 bucks for each one. So at that level, with 10 houses if you built, it would take 102 years to get that money back. You know, now, there's other things that are included, I understand, but I'm just talking just general. If you built 15 houses at the same rate, it would take, it would take, 15 houses would take 68 years. If you built 20 houses, it would take 51 years to recoup that money. So what I'm saying is, if we don't get, I mean, if, if we're not making a good amount of money off that property or land, we're basically throwing money out anyway. You know what I mean? And I feel the same way, like, those people that lived on those streets, Chestnut and Elm Street, I mean, it's, it was, it's totally unfair to them, because as we're buying houses, we're boarding them up. And these people, even if somebody was interested in buying a house, they can't even get homeowner's insurance. So like, to me, it's like, we're basically squeezing these people out. And then on top of it, we get on people in the borough for not taking care of their properties, but us as homeowners ourselves for these, for these two streets or these houses that we own, these properties, we got roofs caving in, we got squirrels and cats and everything else running through these people's houses, and what are they supposed to do? And then they have to, you know, basically, you know, they're going to take whatever they can to get out, I just, I just feel fricking terrible about that.
I think we all do, but what is the solution? Tell me what the solution is.
The solution to me, and I don't know exactly, but I'm a, I'm a giver. I'm a, I'm a person that, I think that those homeowners, not the people who are landlords that bought properties around, people who were owner-occupied, and they're getting, you know, they're getting the, you know, the raw end of this deal. I mean, I would like to be able to see if, on Elm Street, what's left on there? Two houses, and we got one that's already...
We had, we had one appraised, which we'll talk about tonight.
Right, so, like, to me, I would like to be able to see those people, they stuck around or whatever, they, they held on, I mean, which 55 grand going to be to somebody who's going to be retiring, where are they going to go? What are they going to move? Like, what are they going to do with 55 grand?
But listen to me, we didn't call anybody to sell, to buy the property.
No, I understand, I'm not saying, I'm not blaming you.
The borough, the borough by law sends someone out to do an appraisal. The appraisal comes in at $55,000. We can't say, you know what, we really like you, we're going to give you 70.
I understand.
So what do you want, tell us what we should do.
But what I, all I'm saying is this, it's, those people that are there are getting the raw end of the deal, that's what I'm saying.
But what do you want us to do?
Well, the first thing is...
Want us to give extra money?
No, at this point, at this point, it's too late. I mean, it's already down that road, you know what I mean? But you got houses there, those people couldn't stay there. You know what I mean? They couldn't stay there. So it's like, why can't, whoever's going to be that developer, let's just act like we got a plot of land across from Elm Street. Why couldn't somebody give them a house for what we would give them?
Maybe that will happen. You never know. But you're doing 10 houses, 20 houses, I mean, the little parcel on Riverfront, there's 100 and what, with the condos and all, 100 and what, over here, the, the one that...
Island View.
Island View. How many, what's that, 196?
174, I think it was.
Total units.
190 something?
170 something.
170 some units. So, I mean, the numbers you're running are, you know...
Well, that area is a lot bigger, don't you think?
Well, it's not that much bigger, there's only so many acres over there.
But a point of interest on that, where you were talking about how long, 1986, we borrowed $2 million to buy that property? It took us 14 years to develop, to clean up that property, and look what's there. You have the retirement community, we brought over 600 jobs here with Lennox and the other companies. But that was because the people sitting there had enough vision to say, look, there were factories there that, you know, you would have never been able to take down.
What did we use to buy, we used taxpayer money?
Taxp, I thought I was going to get run out of town, because I made a motion to borrow $2 million to buy that property in 1986. But it took us almost 14 years to, if it wasn't for the redevelopment authority, it would never happen.
Right.
Because they went out and got federal loans, they got state loans, they brought people in, not only to clean it up, and, you know, the congressman, everybody were involved, but it was a working agreement that we had with the council and redevelopment authority. And to this day, I mean, you'd have to be crazy not to work with them.
And we've been fortunate enough not to borrow any money so far for this project.
And just another point, Ralph, it annoys me a little bit about Elm Street and Chestnut Street, because I think we all feel really bad about what happened there, but you know what? We didn't create that problem, and neither did those poor people that owned our houses. It's those slum landlords who bought five properties, six properties, eight properties, ran them into the ground, sucked the rent out, roach-infested, and then said, oh, where's the borough, would you like to buy these? And that's what hap, and you know that's what happened.
Well, I mean, I'm just looking at it in the sense of...
You hit the nail, you hit the nail on the...
Nobody sitting here would, would love to be able to do something, but, and I think...
Where was the up, Joe, where was the upkeep there? Where was the upkeep on the property? Once we bought those houses, aren't we responsible for...
No, at that point, we tried to secure them, so they wouldn't deteriorate anymore, you know.
There's giant holes in the roofs, there's squirrels and cats and everything else.
We go out...
We can create that.
No, but it's, we own them, we got to take care of them, don't we?
Well, I think we should secure them.
You know, what everybody forgets, even with the current articles, and they've never talked to, you know, they quote, well, you're quoted in there, so they must have a, you know, they have some credence in what you're telling them, but...
Credence, I don't understand what you mean.
Well, they don't, they don't call any of us, they, you know, you're always quoting...
Because, because they, they say they call, and you guys won't speak, the only one that speaks is Ralph. I speak because I'm my own person.
I never get a phone call from them.
Because you're only going to say the same thing Ralph says, that's what. Why would, why would they waste their time?
They already know that, then, that's right. Fair enough. But you forget about, you know, we had homes on Trenton Avenue.
Yep.
That was there.
And wiped out, unified the area. You have the other side of Elm Street, weren't there houses there?
Burnt down, yeah.
Okay, and we bought them and took them down. I mean, it's a blighted area. So you can't say, we put $2 million into it, how are we going to get our $2 million back? Sometimes you just got to take it on the chin. If something's bad, you got to, you know, now, if, if the borough had gone ahead and said, okay, we're going to condemn it, get the redevelopment authority in there and condemn it, you'd be the first guy complaining.
I'm still complaining.
You would complain that we're moving people out of their homes.
Yeah.
So the borough took the stance that, as they become available, we buy them, and you're still complaining.
Because you don't, it's not the idea, Lou, of, it's maintaining them, so people that are living there still have a decent existence.
Tony, I think we do a good job. I mean, if we're aware of a problem, they cut the grass, they clean up, the houses are boarded, the plywood's painted on the porch, they try to do the best we, they can. You also, if you remember, we said, let's rent them. Am I right when we bought them, I don't know, was it how many off Dr. Davis and...
On Chestnut.
Behind, on Chestnut. Well, right now, out of the, you know, the ones that were rentable, I mean, we probably got about $5,000 more in rent that we can't even collect. So, you know, that didn't work out, and then they were ripping cabinets off the wall, and drains blocked, so we just started victim people. So that's where you're wasting taxpayers' money, by, you know, not getting paid and repairing things.
Right, I, but the focus, see, here's the thing about, we're focusing so much attention on this one area, but there's other properties in the northward that are...
You want to rip them down?
There's a couple that should be, I think, yeah.
Why?
Because...
Why do you want to rip them down?
Because there was one on Buckley Street that had a fire in it, wasn't there? There's, I mean, there's one there that should be probably looked into at least, right?
But you're, you're saying we shouldn't be tearing properties down?
No, no, I'm saying, you have to look at each one individually, right?
Okay.
We're talking about a whole row of homes that we needed to maintain as a borough, that's all I'm saying. Listen, it's, the, the point has moved now, because it's, it's 20 years later, and the damage is done. I'm just speaking my piece.
Okay. What else you got?
That's it.
Louie?
I just want to make a, well, Mr. Gerard's not here, but the apology wasn't for him. My apology is that when I said, you're a roofer, and I hope other roofers aren't offended, like I told Mr. Gerard, after two, two attorneys give their opinions, and he says he doesn't, he doesn't agree with our opinion, he has a different opinion, and I said, you're a roofer. If he said his lawyer had a different opinion, I might go for it. But I don't want anybody to think I'm demeaning roofers or contractors, I spent my whole life, my family's, you know, trade, we're tradespeople, and I've spent my life working with them and friends of them, so I didn't mean it to be derogatory to roofers. I meant, I told Mr. Gerard, I wouldn't ask Mr. Salerno for his opinion on my roof, so I don't need his opinion for legal matters. So for that, I, I want to apologize if I ruffled anybody's feathers other than Dave's. That's all I have.
Tony, speaking about properties, the last several months, I've been in touch and have met with Mr. Dillon and John Miller regarding 158 Buckley Street. It's been vacant for, for many years. John Miller condemned it several years ago. It's in, it's, it's in deplorable condition, and the back of the house is actually separating off. John Miller's recommendation was to acquire it, and it needs, it's a standalone house, but it needs to be, in my opinion, I think it needs to be taken down, if we could have the borough engineer take a look or something, or, but it's just, it's...
Is there somebody that still owns it?
Yeah, it's not bank-owned, I think they still own it, I, I know the bank was out there, because it was going through the foreclosure process, and they looked at it and just said, we're not touching it. So there's nobody, you know, the bank doesn't want to take responsibility because of, you know, and, and the people, the people that were owning it, they keep dumping stuff back there, we leased the property, we cleaned it up, we lien it, we cleaned it up, we lien it, it's just like, it's, it's not, you know, but I, I know that the part of the back of this, the structure is actually separating from the main structure. So I don't, I don't, I don't know.
So you want us to try to buy this house and rip it down?
Yeah, I think, I, that's what John Miller's recommendation was, to, you know, tear it down. Or at least, I, I'm on a, I think we tried to get them to, I think we've taken them to court to have them fix it, to put it into a condition to where it's safe, it's not even safe at this point.
Well, I mean, I, do we have a inspection program put in place that if there's a property Well, I mean, do we have a inspection program put in place that if there's a property that's unsafe, we could force the homeowner to come in and take the house down? I mean, that's just, I don't know. Don't you think?
There's no plumbing, there's no heating, the...
But nobody's living in it, right?
Correct.
So what I'm saying is, I think that under the building code or property, what's it called?
Maintenance?
Property maintenance.
Building code?
Don't we have a vacant, what's that word?
Blight committee?
Blight or whatever. Under blight, I mean, maybe they can condemn the property, then force the homeowner to take it down.
Is that something that the redevelopment authority could help out with, or no? They don't, not with blighted properties?
The redevelopment authority loans people money...
To make those repairs.
And I announced this numerous times, interest-free, to do certain repairs on your house, and you don't pay them back until you sell the property, which is a great tool that they have to help people. I don't know if the program's still in place, but, I mean, at one time, nobody wanted it. I don't know why, but, you know, seniors or whoever, if you fall under a certain income, they would, you know, fix your porch, put a heater in, you know, really help people out that needed it, interest-free. So if you lived there for another fifty years, you don't pay that money back until you sell the property. So, I don't know, I mean...
Can we look into it?
Look into it, see what's what.
Acquiring the property for free, sir?
First of all, you gotta get them to agree to sell you the property, and you gotta, if they're underwater, then you go back to the Chestnut Elm Street thing.
Yeah, and there's a lot of...
If there's a lot of money owed. There's a home on Lafayette, let me just tell you right now, there's a home on Lafayette Street that is, was a reverse mortgage. They gave the people a hundred and eighty-nine thousand. The house is destroyed. When I tell you destroyed, it's not worth twenty-five thousand. So there's an example that, are we supposed to go in and say, well, you know what, the house is abandoned, nobody's, it's on my block? Not my, you know, that front block. Are we supposed to go in and say, well, let's give them the hundred and eighty-nine thousand and the borough, you know, take a hit on it? So, everything right now is so, with the banks and the foreclosures, the banks don't want these homes. Because they know if they take that home back, they're never gonna get their money for it. So, you would understand, well, then why don't you just sell it for whatever it's worth and let somebody go in and rehab it and flip the house? So I don't know, I mean, they keep scheduling foreclosure, the neighbors, so, you know, they're underwater. There's nothing you're gonna do for that bank ever to get their money back. And it could be the same thing here. You don't know if the bank's holding a hundred or a hundred and fifty thousand dollar mortgage on this house. So even if we said we want the house and appraises it twenty thousand, until that bank says...
Twenty thousand.
We'll take the twenty, that house is gonna sit there, it could be there another ten years.
At this point, it's unsafe. I mean, if you walk over there, it really is, like I said, the back of it is literally fallen.
If the bank would take it, see, the bank doesn't want it. That's like the Lafayette Street home. If they would take the home, we could go after the bank, because now we know something will get done. And they're smart, too. They're saying, we're not gonna take this house right now because it's not worth it for us to take the home. Let it sit there and let it collapse. I mean, that's basically, it's the sad part of what's going on in this country right now. But, I mean, you know, look into it, Jim, see what can happen.
The other thing is, I know that the borough crew has been, I don't wanna use the word dumping, but they've been depositing, I guess, cutting trees down throughout the borough when we have the trees falling down, the wood chips, there's piles and piles of wood chips behind Grundy Tower, along, well, it's along the property line, fence line of CVM. It's just piles there, the grass is pretty high. I was wondering if we get the borough crew over there and just, I think, I sent an email and I think George was saying that they're gonna use that for weed control back there. We just get them to spread that out and tidy it up back there.
I know, they're so behind in grass and...
I know.
I think today, everybody was caught in grass.
And the only other thing I have is, Mr. Ivey was here last month regarding, we're gonna look into paving West Roward Avenue, part of that, it's like ten foot by thirty-three foot, along the homes there. I was wondering how we made out with, if George has been able to go out and assess that.
It's on the list, Tony, that's all I can tell you.
Okay. That's all I have, thank you.
Joe?
Let me give you some good news. It's been a busy month for us at the, in the mayor's office and the police and fire department. On the Saturday, April twenty-eighth, we had the medication take-back protocol. I don't know if the chief got any feedback on how many pounds we've gotten rid of, but we were here all day on the twenty-eighth, accepting any drugs, prescription medicine and so forth, if the general public wanted to bring in, drop off or disposal. As Chief Henry mentioned, that Kilo or K-9 is retired, and next Monday night, we're going to honor him. I also got an email from a resident thanking the police department for the wonderful job that they're doing relative to speeding along Pond Street. This was a person who lives on that street. Thank the Bristol Borough Police Department for doing a great job in keeping children and all residents safe. Let's see. Also, too, got a thank you from Bucks County Children and Youth Social Services Agency, thanking the police department for a recent assist that they gave children and youth. And, let's see. In the month of April, we had twelve hundred and forty-one calls in Little Bristol Borough. Twelve hundred and forty-one police calls. Last year, as I mentioned before, we had nineteen thousand four hundred and sixteen calls during the course of the year. The other good news is, in looking at the budget, we're at about twenty-one percent through the month of April, as far as having spent twenty-one percent of our borough budget for the police department. I also just got the Bristol Lions Club Summer Concert Series, starts on June twenty, June tenth, which will run through all the way to Labor Day, or actually continuing all the way through Bristol Day. That's every Sunday night, six o'clock, down at the Wharf. Also, too, there's a guide to historic Bristol Borough, these pamphlets. Every store business, as far as I know, on Mill Street and throughout the borough are in this pamphlet, phone numbers, addresses, and what they do. They're being distributed by the Bristol Borough Business Association. We have some here, and they're in the stores and Rackliff Cafe. So, like I said, all good news. Also, too, I'd like to be able to read the proclamation that we gave to Chief Herb Slack for his fifty years of service to Bristol Borough as a volunteer fireman. I'd like to read that out at our next public meeting. Also, too, I met with the fire chiefs during the course of the month. I know Chief Slack's not here, I think Merrill has some stuff. I just wanna remind everybody that we have the first five hundred CO alarms with ten-year batteries. The chief has asked all the companies to make sure they have smoke alarms on the apparatus, so if we respond to a fire at a house and they don't have them, when it's all said and done, we can install them for the people. And the last thing I have is that I was invited to speak at the Bucks County Chamber of Commerce. They're, they call it their keynote speaker. There was about seventy business people from Bucks County there. It was held at the Grundy Commons Building. Mr. Baumgarten hosted it on the sixth floor, and I talked about all the great things that are happening in our town, increased business, the vacancy rate down very low, and people were very interested about what happened with the revolution in the small business. So, and to end that, I got an interview for the last series, a couple of us did, for, it'll be on Hulu, and then we finished up last Thursday night at the Wharf. That's about it.
Okay. I just have a couple things. First of all, in case anybody hears, Simon Schuster was sold today.
Oh.
So, we heard it was sold for like eight million dollars. I think there's two pieces there, correct? The one sold for eight million or was...
It's got a total of about ten-four.
Wow. Four million. So, that's breaking news, so everybody can...
Keep it as a storage warehouse. That's our plan, storage warehouse.
Saying they're gonna keep it as storage warehouse.
Will CBS be using it still?
Simon Schuster?
No.
Till the end of June.
Yes. Yeah, they bought, CBS bought that, right?
I don't know the law.
Our company that owns it.
Yeah.
Simon Schuster will stay till the end of June.
And then that's it.
And a new company will come in.
A new company will use it as a storage. Is that what you're saying?
Storage and, all right, what else?
Pretty much the same.
All right, just to let you know, tomorrow at one P.M. down at the Wharf, we're gonna be hosting the Secretary of DCNR, Cindy Adams Dunn. State Senator John, I keep forgetting how to pronounce it. Udichok? Udichok is going to be going, starting in Bristol Borough, and I think he's going to go to Easton. He's gonna take the Canal Trail all the way, apparently this is what we're hearing, but he's starting here, he chose Bristol Borough as a starting point. So, if anybody wants to go down tomorrow at one o'clock, you're more than welcome. Talked to, talking to our police chief, counsel, I'm gonna put on the agenda to extend his police contract for two years. His contract's up today. When is your...
Last week.
Last week.
Fourth.
So...
Without a contract.
Yours?
He's been without a contract, so we can vote next Monday to either fire him and don't give it to him, or to renew it. So it'll be on the agenda. The chief brought up a part-time police officer, and I guess as far as we're concerned, if he wants to bring five more in, it really doesn't affect us in any way. He's, him and the mayor are controlling the budget, and I think they're doing a pretty good job with it. I know we had some incidents that, you know, unforeseen, and that's normal, but there's nothing we can do about things like that.
So we'll put it on the agenda to hire...
Put on the agenda to hire Kevin Riley and to extend the, they're two agenda items so far. Chief, are you gonna bring Riley in?
Yes, sir, and also bring Officer Dragon because of his last...
That we hired the month prior. Okay. And you and the mayor will get all that done together. All right, the docks, just so everybody knows, that the dock's been closed from when the incident happened with the ice and everything. We met on, I think it was Tuesday or Wednesday down at the docks with Bellingham, they're the company that built the floating docks, and Simpson and Brown, who was the contractor that was awarded the job. And the borough had them closed because our insurance company and everybody's telling us, until you can get a letter that they're gonna be safe, we don't want anybody on them. So Bellingham had said to us that day at the meeting, we built these docks, we can almost guarantee that nothing's gonna happen to them. So our first response was, then give us a letter to that effect, and we'll open them up tomorrow. So it took two, excuse me, it took two days to get the letter, but on Friday, we received the letter stating that the docks in their mine are safe. So we opened up the docks to the public, they are willing to do whatever they have to do to replace the last two docks, which they wanted to do back in February, but our concern was not to do anything. We talked about this in executive session, in case we weren't happy with their decision, you know, we had to protect the borough on this potential litigation. So I think everything worked out great, and I said, standing, if this happens again next year, you know, what are we gonna do? He said, I guess we'll be standing here next year, figuring out a way to make it right again, but he says, we'll guarantee our docks. So we're dealing with two, as far as I'm concerned, very qualified and quality people that are willing to do whatever they have to do to make it right. So that's good news. As far as the Wharf is concerned, our guys did an outstanding job down there, as far as I'm concerned. They're now coming to completion of the project. The only thing left is the painting. I had asked anybody if they wanted to come here and give us a day rate or, you know, nobody had showed up. So I made a couple phone calls, and we have a price to paint the Wharf for ninety-seven hundred dollars. That's labor only, which is probably, I don't think you're gonna get anybody to give you a better number than that for about a three to four weeks' worth of work. There's a lot of painting that's gotta be done down there. So I'm just, it doesn't have to go out to a vote, the manager can make that decision. If anybody's against that, let them know, but they're ready to start on Wednesday. We like to get it done for Memorial Day weekend. So, you know, working with the borough crew, we're gonna buy the material, we have an account set up to buy everything that we need, and they'll do a good job. So, nobody's opposed, I'll have the manager contact them tomorrow and tell them to proceed. Jim, you have anything?
No, just what's listed for items for consideration at Monday evening's meeting. I don't know if anyone has any questions on that, but I would like to iterate what Samantha said about the MS four plutonium reduction plan, which we're being forced to do. It could cost the borough four hundred and fifty thousand plus another hundred and twenty-five thousand of engineering over the next three to five years. So it's, you know, it's a mandate, and it's gonna be very costly. So I don't know if you had any questions about the items that are ready to go for Monday night on the agenda, if they were in your packet, to the best of my knowledge.
The other thing is, Jim, I forgot to bring up the purchase of ten, I forget that address, Elm Street.
Twenty-three.
Ten-twenty.
That's listed there, is ten-twenty-three Elm Street, in the amount of fifty-five thousand dollars.
Okay.
Also, we opened bids, I think it was Thursday, and Gilmore has given us a recommendation for a word handicap curb bid for Wilson and Garfield for fourteen thousand nine hundred and forty dollars. That does not include the material, the borough will pay for that. Then after that, there's only one intersection that still has to be finished, and then all Wilson Avenue will be completed, because also Mill Run's going to do a section there on Wilson. But I guess that's about it.